Good evening, everyone. If I can get everyone's attention. It is now 7:00 PM on Monday, May 23rd, 2022. I hereby call this meeting of the Board of Education of the Nordonia Hills City School District to order. This is a typical meeting of the Nordonia Hills City Schools Board of Education. It is a meeting in public, but is not a public meeting.
Mike, we're not streaming yet, are we? No, next time we'll be streaming online.
Okey dokey. Later, the meeting will be published online for those who did not have a chance to attend and want to be able to view. There will be an opportunity for public participation in the open forum section of the meeting a little bit later. All speakers should have already signed in and will be called to the post at the appropriate time. If you are uncomfortable with speaking during an open forum, comments and questions may always be submitted to the Board and Administration through emails or phone call. Mr. Brown, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kearney?
Here.
Mr. Larmour?
Here.
Mrs. McKinley?
Here.
Mr. Tidmore?
Here.
Ms. Vodich?
Here.
All Board members present.
Can we please stand for the closing moments?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
A motion.
One second.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Tidmore?
Yes.
Vodich?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, communications. We like to honor kids that do wonderful things and go on to state for various competitions. And we have some outstanding Cogge Valley Career Center students here that are going to be honored. And to honor them, I'm going to call up Josh and Jim. Josh, for those of you that don't know, Josh used to be a principal here at Lee Eaton before he went over to the Cogge Valley Career Center. And you know that Jim Burrows is the Board's representative of the CBCC. So I'm going to turn it over to both of you guys to talk about these wonderful kids you brought with you.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Yeah, this is full circle for me, actually. The students are graduating as seniors this year from Nordonia, where the last class I had as principal at Lee Eaton Elementary. So this is kind of bittersweet, watching them circulate through both the Nordonia schools but also on the CBCC side. Watching them kind of grow into their future lives has been a tremendous opportunity for me. So thank you for all the students. It's been part of that ride for me personally. So I did want to mention some of our students this year that placed at the state level and also the national level through several of our student organizations, through career tech student organizations. We sponsor Skills USA, HOSO, which is our Health Occupation Students of America, Business Professionals of America, which is our DPA, and then also Educators Rites. So I'd start off first of all with Gary Elgery, who did not see with us this evening. But Gary is in our Education Professionals Program. He'll be graduating this year. Received a silver medal in Teacher Creative Materials at the state competition for Educators Rites. Ryan Kinsch, who's in our Engineering Program. He placed second in Engineering Tech and Design at State Skills.
Come on up and stand in front of the table.
Yeah, perfect. Ryan can stand there by himself until I give the next verse. Congratulations, Ryan. Eddie Orzal, also from our Engineering Technology Program. He placed first in Principals in Engineering, which he did also last year as a junior. And I think has a conflict to be able to compete at the national level again. And I believe Eddie would do summer holidays and Nationals. So Eddie's fantastic. Nick LaShaba, who I do not see here as well. Nick is our Power Equipment Technology Program. He finished first in Diesel Equipment at the State Skills USA Competition. Amanda Stamp is from our Sports Medicine Exercise Science Program. She placed third in Sports Medicine at the State Skills Competition. Amanda will be going to national, I believe, right? To compete at nationals. Josh Toker is from our Construction Trades Program. He placed third in Teamwork at the State Skills USA Competition this year. I supervise construction. I consider Josh to be part of a very wonderful group of young individuals that are going to build the world for us in the future. And then also, I have two juniors that placed very well this year that are with us tonight. Marsha Dombrowski is our Education Professionals as a junior. She placed fourth in Children's Literature and Ethical Diploma. She's also going to be a State Officer for Educators Rites next year. And then also Giovanni Ami from Keating Air placed second at HDAC State Skills USA Competition. Very proud of all of their efforts and appreciate everything you guys do for us both at Nordonia and CBCC.
All right, we're going to open the next student. Mr. Hayes does the five story. And if you can't, you can sit in the board table. You guys come around and shake down. We are so proud of all of our students. Cogge Valley Career Center is a great place. It provides wonderful opportunities. We are proud of it. I think there is maybe one more. Jim, are you going to talk about the next?
I can get my committee report or?
Why don't you do this first and then we'll let them get some ice cream or something.
I'm a bit embarrassed here, but. Let me introduce Maria Kundra. Maria is a graduating senior from Nordonia tomorrow. She's also a member of the Career Center's Digital Design Class. And this year, she was selected as the Student Employee of the Year. Mrs. Melissa Munro, our Digital Design Instructor, nominated Maria for this award. She has maintained excellent attendance the two years as well as straight A's in digital design. She's a talented designer with a positive attitude. She always asks questions when needed and has excellent communication skills. Maria has achieved three Adobe certifications. She designed the 50th Anniversary Banner and signed for the Career Center. Her employer, Karen Becker, the owner of Becker Signs, is extremely happy to have Maria working for her. She stated that Maria is helpful and always up to any new task. She also received a pay raise after just a few weeks on the job. Ms. Becker also said Maria's work. She continues to learn new skills quickly, eagerly, and every day. We could not be more impressed with her. Maria was awarded for her achievement at the Career Center's Senior Recognition Ceremony during the presentation of scholarships on Tuesday, May 10. She received a $250 scholarship for post-secondary education or industry-specific supplies. Maria has found a true liking for the arts and communications field and plans to continue work at Becker Signs while she attends Kent State University to further her studies in visual communications. Ladies and gentlemen, please congratulate Maria Kundra.
Okay, congratulations to all of our students from Cogge Valley Career Center, especially our seniors who'll be moving on. Now, you are absolutely invited to stay for the rest of the meeting or I see that Rosati's has coffee break tonight. This is not in my bag, but Culver's has Snicker Swirl. So I think you deserve ice cream. You're welcome to go do that. Or you can stick around for the board meeting. You can teach to do that.
And to those seniors, we'll see you tomorrow night. We have reached.
Maria, good luck to you.
We have reached that part of our meeting where it's time for open forum. Although the public has the right to attend board meetings, it has no inherent right to participate in deliberations of the Board without its consent. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of school operations and programs as that concern them. But in public session, the Board has the right to request that complaints about school personnel or against any person connected with the school system be directed to the appropriate administrator. The time on the wall will provide the five minutes to each speaker. And who do we have first?
All right, so from my record, I only see one public forum tonight, open forum. Mr. Jeffrey Podolsky?
Podolsky.
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 All right, good evening. It's my first time speaking at one of these. I apologize for my underdressed. I got a meeting with the treadmill later. So first of all, thank you for everything that you guys do. And sometimes it seems like a thankless task. So we appreciate your efforts, even though the representation of the community doesn't always show it. We're in the background and we are watching. This past week, I had the pleasure of hooking up my laptop, this laptop, to a projector in Rushwood for the fourth grade celebration. USB-C on this two-year-old laptop is too new to connect for projectors in Rushwood. So unfortunately, I had to go home, find an older laptop, and move my presentation over it to get it to connect and present the fourth grade celebration. And which is amazing. We've heard arguments on both sides of this issue for proposed schools and spending. Unfortunately, the world is spinning faster and faster. And that's going to continue to happen with Nordonia or without succeeding. Microelectronics are attaching themselves that everything coding is a part of this world. Name something that doesn't involve it. Some people say carpenters, electricians, and plumbers. But even my water meter is digital now. So that is the world that we're coming to and that's what we're growing into. And I wish these kids were still here to hear it. What they're doing is fantastic. And what they're going to be a part of is amazing. I mean, even if it is SpaceX and planning the next bathroom for a spaceship, we can't, at our age, anticipate what these kids are going to expect. The race isn't getting started. It already began. We need to play catch-up at this school district. The STEM puts its roots here in grade school, middle school, high school. The strength of that STEM depends on you and the community to approve that spending. Make sure that when the headwinds blow, our stems are strong, all right? Many generations have enjoyed the buildings and the success of this district and kicked the can down the road for someone else to deal with. But the world's not getting cheaper. And if not now, when? I hope you guys take this to heart when we talk about putting these issues on the ballot. We have good community support. I want that to continue through the next session, the next board. So please, thank you for your time and put some thought into it because I know a lot of people that are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Podolsky?
So we are ready for reports from liaisons to board committees and superintendent committees. So we put down the table. Mr. Tidmore, do you have any committee reports?
I do not have a report.
So back when COVID hit, the Finance Fact Committee kind of fell apart. And we were doing in-person meetings. So we're reconstituting the Fact Committee. We have received applications. So our new finance committee is going to be made up of Stacy Suji, Karen Byers, Doug Masfeller, Robert Gillian, Samantha Salon, and Lisa Clark. So those are our six members. I will be a member of it as the board liaison. Ms. Vodich will be a board liaison. And Mr. Brown will be leading the committee. And looking forward to hopefully getting our first meeting in June and get back up and running and see if we can get some projects as a Fact Committee to kind of see where the finances are heading and what we can do to help the board.
Yeah, I have something that I'd like to add. Just a congratulations to our middle school track teams. Both the boys and girls won the league tournament and they're champions of the suburban league. And multiple records were broken, I was told, which is phenomenal. So I'd like to give them a round of applause for all their efforts. Nothing else.
Mr. Larmour, you have the financing report. That was all I had, so.
There's, there are a lot of like education bills that are floating around and some that are still in committee. A couple that are noteworthy at this point. House Bill, House Bill 333 has passed the House by a 72 to 19 vote. And it will require the state to recommend a job description for school counselors. The bill would also require public schools to consider these recommendations when preparing job descriptions and assigning duties for school counselors. Additionally, it would also make the, require the designation of a school counselor liaison at the Department of Education. And then the Senate Primary and Secondary Education Committee amended House Bill 583, which would extend the current temporary flexibility for school districts regarding educational requirements of substitute teachers until June 30th of 2024. The bill also establishes that there's to be a study committee to examine the substitute teacher shortage because it has been a crisis. How many administrators do we have today tonight? How many times have you been in teaching classes? Quite a few, as have, has my principal at work. So it's, you know, everybody, it's been all hands on deck because of the substitute shortage. So this gives us a little leeway, but they're looking into what is causing it and see what happens. It also has, it gave a number of things that are changing with the, to some of the dyslexia legislation. And they used it as a platform to change a few other things. But those were the big pieces of it for us right now when we look at the substitute shortages that we've been having. That's all we're going to share tonight, so.
All right, let's move into my recommendation. Item one, I recommend you approve the consent items listed.
I will motion.
Second.
These are two field trips, both for the band, their annual band camp at the Skyview Ranch. And then also a trip to Johnson City, Tennessee, this October for the Bands of America. And you'll see a donation. It never ceases to amaze me the generosity of our community. This is a $100 donation to Ledview Elementary Library in memory of Phyllis Nestor, who was a former Ledview Special Needs Teacher. And approving two textbooks. These are for two of those new courses we'll be offering in the fall. Black History College Credit Plus course and the Biotechnology course.
Question, the CCP course, the Black History CCP course. That runs through Kent State?
That's through Kent State. And that's actually a Kent State University textbook.
Any other questions?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two is a recommendation to approve the vouchers for Ohio resolution.
Motion. One second.
You'll remember the voucher for Ohio legislation going on is a group of school districts across the state who are trying to prevent the backpack bill from becoming law. The backpack bill, if it were to pass, would basically be, it would basically allow any student in the state to attend a private school using their public taxpayers' tuition money to pay that tuition. The problem, with lots of problems with it, one of the most significant problems is that private schools would not be required to take any student that they wanted to take. They could still decide who they would let in. The other problem is just a huge financial burden. But when you think about the Nordonia schools, you don't have a, there's not a mechanism currently in place that would allow us to know how many residents in our district go to private schools. If they've never enrolled in kindergarten year, we don't know how many there are. So our best speculation is we probably have 300 kids or so who go to private school. And if the backpack bill were to pass, automatically, we would be losing about $2 million a year of tax money to fund private schools. We only get about $1,500 per kid from the state. But the backpack bill would give $5,500 for kids in grades K-8 and $7,500 for kids in grades 9 and 12 to pay their tuition. So it's not just a shift of state money. It's a shift of local money voted on by these taxpayers, which is why I am recommending that you join the, join the resolution, join our school boards around the state to fight the vouchers backpack bill.
Do you have any questions?
I would like to just follow up briefly just on some legal points. Because of course, I'm sure some of you are where I do practice law throughout different state courts, throughout the state federal courts. And generally, I'm not in favor of this from a legal standpoint. I believe that depending on the length of the litigation, which could be anywhere from three to four years, could cost the district well over potentially $15,000. Shockingly, there's no indication in the complaint that the plaintiffs were demanding reimbursement for attorney fees, which I think is imperative and should have been done from the get-go. As well as this time in my research, the docket, there were no answers filed. There were no dispositive motions such as motions to dismiss, motions for summary judgment. And really, I believe those are necessary first to test the veracity of that complaint and whether the case would successfully continue. I also believe we could join in at a later date once answers are filed. And I'd really like to see the Board try to table this until at least we determine what we're doing in November with the bond issue, given that we do have to pay, I believe it's $2 per student?
$2 per student.
Per year, I think, during the course of the regulation?
That's right.
So for those reasons, I have a lot of legal concerns. Thank you.
So the Board, we discussed this probably a year ago. So we worked hard with this. And at that time, the Board did choose to wait and see where this was headed. And I, obviously, I'm a public school member. So I am a huge proponent of public school systems. And I just think we're slowly chipping away. If not now, when? If not who, who's going to do it? You know, the grand scheme of how much money is getting taken out of our public school system and shifted to private schools? I think, I think it's money well spent. I think it will repay itself when we win this because I do think we're creating a parallel school system, funding system that's not in our Ohio Constitution. So I can't speak to Matt because I don't get into the legal details of that. So I'm not discussing anything you say. I'm just saying, I think we need to jump into this. I want this to go through. I think stuff like this needs to be squashed at the state level.
Mr. Larmour mentioned the Ohio Constitution. And according to the Ohio Constitution, our state constitution calls for a common school to educate our children. And our public schools take everyone. No one is turned away. When you go private, you apply. And you can be turned away. You can also be asked to leave mid-year if you don't fit their mold. And the accountability for the tax dollars that they would be receiving is not equal to that which the public schools are required to hold. And also, they are also not held to the same academic accountability. They are not required to take the state tests that all our students are made to take. And when we look at what we have in place to meet children who have, who have regular ed students, who have children that who have learning disabilities, children who have 10-year-old disabilities, children who are gifted. We meet the full realm. And our private sector often does not. You can find some that will specialize in one particular area. But what we offer and are accountable for, and I think accountability is a huge factor here. I am in support of this. And if the backpack pill goes through, one high school student, $7,500, well, theirs is paid for one year of paying for being a member of this litigation. And I am, I am in full support of this.
I think I'll just chime in from a practical standpoint, both as a parent and as a public employee, understanding that I don't, when we think about, we talk about physical responsibility. And I think I brought this up when we were in conversation. It's amazing to me that our public schools are held to a state-mandated testing system for measurement, performance. However, the schools that would be benefiting the private institutions who are not held by those standards would be, also be funded at a greater rate than what we are. But we are held with a greater accountability, which in a practical sense, just doesn't make sense. And as a public employee, as a public servant of this community, I think we would definitely be opening up a way to drain us financially. And all on the backs of you and I, the taxpayers who live in this community to support for others to go and make personal decisions about education that they specifically want for their children. Well, I pay taxes because I want my kids to go to a school district. And they're benefiting from that in the public institution. I think as a, just a rule of thumb, one thing I've always thought of when we want to have other opportunities, if I want my son to be exposed or daughter to be exposed to other opportunities, I have to pay those costs to make that happen. And I don't ask for the public to do that. I think that's a decision that we make personally as a family. So I would just have to say, just here from my heart as a parent and as a public servant, I think that it is time for us to stand with those who stand with supporting public education and the furtherance of that in our community. Equity and inclusion, you know, people are scared to say those words nowadays. But the fact of the matter is, we are creating more exclusivity when we say that we want to put money into schools that can tell kids that they can't con because they don't fit their mold. That, to me, is a travesty. That's my, my, my take on this situation.
Mr. Tidmore, I can just piggyback on that because I think it's important. I mean, ultimately, I'm a big supporter of public education. The issues that I have, of course, are more litigation-based. And I hate to see the district spending dollars, potential litigation that could go three to four years with little or no result. So I think that's my concern, not necessarily that I don't support the public education.
Well, glad to hear that, and I support that.
Could you tell me again, you said, if, let's just say this backpack bill wants to pass, we lose how much for them?
It's speculation, right? We don't have accurate counts. But when you look at, our biggest private school is St. Marnigus. Whatever their enrollment is, the kids that we have at the private schools, in fact, Matt might even know by how many kids were busing to those places. Would you? We do, I hate to put you on the spot.
It's hundreds.
Hundreds of kids, right? So let's pretend, you know, they're all K, it's $5,500 a kid. $5,500 times a couple hundred is, you're close to 2 million there.
2 million. And you had mentioned, how much in litigation? 15?
Estimates, 15 to 18, if that's a three to four year.
$2 a kid, right.
The issue that we have is their constitutional-based arguments, and we've talked in other meetings that remedies often for constitutional arguments are, yes, it's unconstitutional, but the court can't necessarily come up with a remedy. And so that's, that's the issue that we have here, is that even if we win successfully and the district were to win, in the end, we may be in similar situations where we've seen the Ohio Supreme Court rule, public education's being funded constitutionally, but necessarily nothing changes from that. Also, the backpack bill is not passed currently, correct?
Correct.
And so the court may have an issue with that, in that the issue's not even right yet. In other words, it has to pass before you can bring a suit, so.
Well, I feel like we need to start to get, we need to get motivated with bringing that forward, because as you know, it takes so long to start litigating through all of that, that if we wasted any more time, just like we always said, you guys talked about this last year, and decided, well, let's wait a little bit. Now we're at that critical point, where we either get in a fight, or we sit back with our fingers crossed, hoping that it doesn't affect us. And then we're gonna be scratching our heads later, saying, what, I wish we would have done something. Why didn't we do something? So I feel like this is the time, maybe last year wasn't, but I think now it is.
In the last biennial budget, the voucher program was drastically expanded. So more, I mean, as more and more kids have become able to qualify, what the backpack bill is, we already have qualifying guidelines that have been enlarged. What we have with the backpack bill is just full of the first. So the vouchers are already creating a dilemma in the state. And if the backpack bill does go through, it exacerbates to the end.
It's interesting to point out too, because the lawsuit was filed months ago, and as defendants, you would have 28 days to respond. And we still have no answer. So I think it just goes to show the size of the cases, so.
I think it is gonna be big, I think.
It's very big.
And it will go on for years, so. And the court may do that perfectly.
They may, they may. For me, it's about, because there are school boards across the state that are having the same discussion. Some are joining and some are not joining, and I think they're all very good reasons. To me, it's almost a sense of obligation that public schools are in this together, and we have, our neighbors to the south, Woodridge, is leading this charge, and there are other districts in the area. And I just, I feel we have the responsibility to work together. And I hope that it's money well spent, you know? And I hate that we have to spend it, quite honestly. Right? If the vouchers didn't exist to begin with, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So I hate that we're put in a position where we have to, have to do this.
Matt, do we pay for that, through the general fund? Or is it, where do we get the monies for that?
For the potential?
Pay for the suit? Yeah, pay for the.
Yeah, so that would come out of the, that would come out of the general fund.
Anything else?
Nothing here.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
No.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, this one's gonna be easier. Item 3, approve presentation of diplomas to our graduating class.
A motion.
A second.
So these are the kids that will be crossing that stage tomorrow, and it's subject to them needing all their qualifications, so there is not a risk of you accidentally giving a diploma to somebody. But I think we have, we're probably pretty darn close to 99.9%.
I would like Mr. Wright to get up and recite all the names.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4 is a recommendation to approve a contract with the Akron area YMCA for next school year.
A motion.
I'll second.
This is our before and after care program, where they have sites set up in four of our buildings for before and after school.
Any questions?
No, I think it's a great program. My son goes to it. He's happy to hear why you see him start smiling.
My daughter's there sometimes, too.
It's a great program.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5 is a recommendation to approve the PALE contract with the Akron area YMCA.
A motion.
I'll second.
Just a reminder, PALE is our, in lieu of suspension program at the high school, that we staff it with YMCA personnel, just because it's more cost-effective than putting a full-time teacher in there. Gary Ennis is the guy that runs the program, retired police officer, and it's actually, believe it or not, not punitive. It is meant to be instructional, teaching kids life skills and how they might make better choices in the future.
Any questions?
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6 is a recommendation to approve these contracts for the pupil services department.
A motion. Second.
And you're gonna see that the first three are for students with disabilities, the fourth one is to provide transportation for those students, and the fifth one is for our clinical counseling that is available to all of our students in the district.
Any questions? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 7 is a recommendation to approve the settlement agreement and release of claims for transportation. This is, I wrote about this in the board update.
A motion.
A second.
Honestly, I struggle with this one. I know it's unbelievably minor, valid or not, in the grand scheme of things, but it bothers me. We could cut busing, we've had all kinds of things happen through COVID, it must just smooth, ridiculous and terrible.
Mr. Kearney.
All abstained.
Mr. Limer.
No.
Mrs. McKinley.
No.
Mr. Tidmore.
No.
Ms. Vodich.
No.
Motion fails.
Item 8 is a recommendation to approve the school links agreement.
I have a.
A motion. A second.
This is to replace Naviance, which is something that Todd can speak much more intelligently than I can about. Todd, do you have anything to say about this?
No, I don't have anything else to add, other than what I provided in the update. If you guys have any questions regarding the program or any of the changes, we think it's gonna be a lot better solution for our kids and our staff.
Okay.
Any questions?
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 9 is a recommendation to approve the construction agreement with industrial energy systems for middle school, excuse me, roof replacement.
A motion.
Second.
Just a reminder that this is the roof over the new portion of the building only, the gym, which we expect, we will be keeping that portion of the building no matter what happens with our facilities. We absolutely need gym space, and if we don't do something now, we're gonna be replacing a gym floor within the next couple of years.
Any questions? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 10 is a recommendation to approve all-day kindergarten tuition for next school year.
A motion.
I'll second.
I'm gonna say this about item 10, actually 11 and 12 also. First of all, these are all the same rates for all of these items that we've charted the last few years, except for these student consumable fees, those are actually a little less. I think you guys know by now what my philosophy is and what my hope is. I hope that we can come to a point as a district where we don't have to charge these fees. I would love for our kids to be able to attend kindergarten for free, to play sports for free, to be in the band for free, and not to have to pay fees. And I would like for, honestly, to be part of my goals for next year, to investigate it, to work with the fact committee, to see if we can make some sort of headway here. Of course, the problem is, is that this, all three of these bring in significant dollars to us, so it's not something that I think that we should take lightly, but I think it does need to be studied, and I would like to see us get to move that way. As it is, though, I think the prudent thing to do is to approve the current rates for next year. And in all of these things, students who qualify for free to reduce lunch, I get either discounts or free.
Matt, do you know about how much it is per year? Will bringing in for kindergarten tuition?
Yeah, so we're currently to date, we're just over $286,000 in all-day kindergarten tuition. We still have a couple weeks to go in the school year, so I would say right around that ballpark. We have increased, obviously, this year. Last year, there was a dip due to COVID, so.
Increase in room, yeah, not the price.
I'm sorry, no increase in price, but as far as tuition collection, there was an increase this past year.
I know Dr. Park and I have spoken about this, and I'm in complete agreement. I would hope to find a way to start phasing these out, phasing these down.
Family caps has been another thing we've talked about.
Family caps. Can we, you know, as a board, talk about redirecting some of the MGM money, MUD? I really like to find a way, you know, one at a time, and start somewhere and start putting things down. I think it's good for everyone. I mean, you know, we did hope a lot, we passed a levy recently, you know, we kind of start to hopefully get back a little bit, you know?
I agree. The kindergarten, I mean, that's number 10, the one we're on, a year and year to my heart. I'd love to see all of our kids in all-day kindergarten, and just easy. There was a brief period of time, what was it, like two?
Two years.
Two years. It was state law, you had to offer all-day kindergarten to everyone. My now sophomore was one of the kids who went to kindergarten all day, and that's the way it was, and then that was taken away. And I would like to see us be able to get that back down. That would just be wonderful. But for now, we have to study, we have to, we can see what we can do, and the impact it will have on us financially. So that just takes some time. We need a little time, but that is something that's on our radar.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 11 is a recommendation to approve the pay-to-participate fees for, this is for athletics and band and choir.
A motion.
I'll second.
Same thing that I just said earlier, I'd love to get away from these, but this is what we charged the last second years.
Do you have any idea on the problem?
Yeah, so all extracurriculars to date, we've collected about $655,000. Part of that goes into, majority of that goes in the general fund, and then the portion related to athletics, a certain amount of that goes in there as well, so. That's where we're at right now to date, $656,000 for extracurriculars.
I just want to highlight too, during campaign season last year, I heard a lot about this, a lot of parents had concerns with this. I saw in a lot of families that had multiple children, that they would oftentimes have to pick and choose which extracurricular that they would participate in. And so I would love to see this removed, and I would love to see the board work towards that. I know it's a lot of money for the district, but I think there's ways that we can work around potentially other areas that we can improve, and I'd like to see that happen.
I agree, and I hear it a lot also from parents, and then I hear from community members who are not parents who say, I don't want to have to pay for these kids to do that, even though, I don't, I mean, I think all of us are probably of an age, when we were in school, we didn't have to pay for these things. It's just kind of the current phenomenon or recent phenomenon that I would like to move away from. Like you said, I want our kids to be able to do whatever they can do, you know? I don't want them picking and choosing.
Plus, they get open to better scholarship opportunities and, you know, doing other things.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
No.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item 12 is a recommendation to approve the student academic consumable fees for grades K through 8.
A motion.
I'll second.
Same as above, same things I said, other than we charge, why you see funky numbers here is because we charge exactly what we pay. It's been several years now, but we just used to charge a blanket like 50 bucks or 75 bucks, which meant that some people were paying for stuff that they didn't get, and others were paying less than what they got. So that's why it's 3912 for kindergarten, and et cetera.
Matt, do you have any idea on consumables?
So on the Class B side, which would fall into the consumables, we brought in 200, just under $250,000 on consumables in Class B.
Because in my mind, that's the, in my mind, that would be the first one to go. If you could bring that down, that's, kids are in school, they have no choice, that's what they have. I'd like to see that put down. At least you can make the argument with pay-to-participate, that those are extras. Although I think they're extremely important to education, and I participated in them when I was in school, they are extra. So that's just my thought.
And again, these are fees that are being charged for some of middle school.
Now, these are the, you have the consumables, so it's workbooks the kids are writing in, it's journals.
But as we're moving to a digital age, and I know, primary grades, they still need to have handprint, but as we're moving to the digital age, won't we see some of these kind of go away anyway?
Mike, I mean, these are the lowest they've been in years.
Yeah.
I can speak specifically to some of them. Actually, some of the digital pieces actually cost more.
Really?
The digital, the digital, the multi. The digital.
Each kid gets an account instead of.
It actually becomes, some of our most expensive programming is through our math, and that's the digital pieces part.
So then, we would be, at some point, if we're trying to see this kind of go away, be discussing, where do we find the $250 to pay for this out of the general fund or something?
Well, yeah. Matt just read the, what we're paying, so any one of those decisions is based on.
Yeah. These are, like Dr. Park said, some of the lowest fees that you've seen being recommended for the board to approve in recent years. I've already started to take the approach of trying to eliminate what we can and kind of, or pay for all, pay for pilot programs, so some of those old materials are no longer being accessed or used, because we're running different programming, and I can try to pick that up through a curriculum fund. School links is another one that I mentioned in the board update.
I don't want us to compromise the integrity of the great education that our kids get here, the same, the same dollars, but I just want to go as possible as.
Would I try every? Yeah, every year, I look at audits, not just for consumables, we look at those every year, of course, but we also look at our technology software, whatever you use. So wherever I can make adjustments and switch things around and pay, pick up some of these things, I'm trying to do that.
Yeah? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
No.
Mr. Limer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Vodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 13 is a recommendation to approve the disposal of personal property in the board policy.
A motion.
A second.
These are iPads, Mike? No, I can hear. Okay, thank you. We talked about it this morning. You think I've written.
Yeah, I did a brief board update on this, but essentially, what we're finding is, our crumple refreshes, our devices are good for five years. At that point in time, they become end-of-life by Google standards. They don't receive the software updates we need.
They don't receive the software updates we need, some of the state software we weren't testing on doesn't work anymore. In the old days of classroom technology, when computers became obsolete, we would literally just recycle them, it didn't have much value anymore. Rather than just recycling these devices, we partnered with CDWG and a company called Repower. I mean, they helped us find a home for our smart boards that were taken down and a little of our new interactive panels. This company's going to evaluate the devices we have. While many of them are tired and worn out, they do have some value, so instead of just recycling them, try to recoup some dollars from the investment we made initially. So, this is something I've done the last few years, it's just, the value of Chromebooks has gone down a little bit, believe me, not because more districts have bought into that, and they're not, I mean, it's not as rare anymore to have reused Chromebook available, because people have them from COVID and government funding, CARES Act, something like that, so. Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Lymer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item 14 is a recommendation to approve the personnel items listed.
A motion.
I'll second.
There's just one outstanding item on here that I'd like to recognize, and that is Ashley Turner, who happens to be here today. Ashley has been selected as our new associate principal at the middle school, went through several rigorous interviews. Ashley, welcome aboard. I'm going to put you on this, do you mind telling the board just a little bit about your background and what made Nerdonia one of those places you wanted to come work?
So, I'm currently a high school history teacher at our Middle East High School, and so just looking into Nerdonia, just, I'm happy to be here.
Thanks, Ashley, congratulations. Assuming the board votes yes. Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Mr. Lymer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report. Congratulations.
All right, so unfortunately, I have a little bit of a long agenda tonight on my report, and quite a few things to go through, a couple of presentations, so trying to be quick, but also give you all opportunities to comment and provide questions if you have any. On my approval of the consent items, I have the special board meeting minutes of April 25th, 2022, the regular board meeting minutes from April 25th, 2022, the financial statements of April 2022, and Ohio checkbook treasurer presentation, I recommend for approval.
A motion.
Second.
All right, so, before I get into the Ohio checkbook, just wanted to give a brief update of our financial position through the month of May 2022. So, for everyone's purpose out there, I know that's not a very conducive environment to look at that information up there, but this information will be put on the district's website under the treasurer's page. So, for the month of April 2022, we have ended that month with $53.1 million in revenues, compared to last year at the same time of $48.5 million, so that's a 9.4% increase. Some of the contributing factors which I've noted in previous reports is our restricted state grants and aids, that's a significant increase of 1,106.8%, mainly contributed to the change in how the state funds school districts with House Bill 110. Our student policy success funds that were historically provided in a special revenue fund are now part of the general fund. They've also increased gifted funding, so that's why you're seeing that significant increase. The other item that's of note, and more importantly, is in the all other revenues line, that's a 125% increase, and for the reason that's driving that is due to the all-day kindergarten tuition fees, which I talked about earlier, last year due to COVID, we did not have as many in that all-day kindergarten option. And then also, the bigger component of that is the MGM settlement. The first settlement, if you recall, all went into the PI fund, permanent improvement fund. We received the second settlement in March of 2022, so that has now been posted to the general fund, and that'll be open for discussion during the forecast time. And then on the expenditure front, through April 2022, we've hit $43.6 million in expenditures, compare that to prior year, the same time of $43.1 million, and that's a 1.3% increase. Our personnel services are showing a 2.2% increase, and that's in line with the board-approved CBAs, collection bargaining agreement, negotiated agreements. And then also, the areas where we're seeing the largest increases in expenditures is in supplies and materials, which I've noted on in the past, we're in a full-year education and teaching models compared to last year where there are different models going on. So our supplies and materials, as well as our building and ground supplies have increased, and as well as fuel, which I talked on in previous times, our fuel costs continue to increase compared to prior year. And so overall, expenditures are showing a 1.3% increase. Net income through April 2022 is at $9.5 million, and our unencumbered, unreserved fund balance is at 21 million, just over 21 million, and when you compare that to last year at the same time, unencumbered, unreserved fund balance last year was 17.1 million. That's the financial position through April 2022. I think any questions on that side? Okay. And then, real quick, I wanted to give the board a brief presentation on the Ohio checkbook. That was one of the goals that I had put in as I started out my career at Nerdonia, was to provide an opportunity to be transparent and accountable how we're spending our monies. I believe with the implementation of this tool, the citizens and taxpayers of this community are be able to see how we're spending our money. But I wanted to show you what that looks like, because there are some caveats and things that we need to be aware of when that information is put out there onto the internet. So, the way you get through there is, this is a free program provided through the Ohio State Treasurer's Office. Once we go live on this, I will put a link on the district website so people can go there directly, as opposed to how we're going through here. But basically, you go to the state treasurer's website, go under the transparency tab, and they have a Ohio checkbook link that'll take you there. And it breaks it down between the state of Ohio, local government, and schools, which we'll go into. And then here, it breaks down even further into the different governmental entities, and the school district is one of those. And then just alphabetically, you pick your school district you'd like to look at, so we look under the heading for Nerdonia, there'd be a link there. It is important to note, when I was working with the state treasurer's office on getting this implemented, there are 901 government entities in the state of Ohio that are currently on this software. There's 176 school districts, and there's only 10 school districts in Summit County that are currently on the software, so we'll add that when we go live. Really what it will look like, and again, this is a very admin, I'm in the admin portal right now, so it'll look much easier for when the public uses it, but it gives just a snapshot of what it will kind of look like when it's in a live mode. Basically, you have all sorts of different sort options, you can sort by fiscal year, I'll add that fiscal year 2022. So we're going to have at least three years of history in here, so you can kind of see where we have spent money in the past and where we are currently. You're able to, if you hover over these things, these different bars, you're able to kind of see what fund you're looking at and how much that's related. If you want to just pinpoint down to a specific fund, you can do that through this little top box. The department, again, this is geared for all governmental entities, so some of these coatings don't really line up with the school, so the department is more for our functions, the different functions of the school district, so there's a litany of different functions. You can pinpoint specifically what you want to look at. The objects would be, when you go down even further, you could look at supplies, material, purchase services, fuel, different things like that, so you can select the ones you want to look at. And then, it also provides payees, so you're able to see who the district has paid and how much they've paid, and then it provides additional detail on those as you work through that. The one thing I do want to note to the board and to the public is, this product is for checks that we actually issue, so when we write a check, that would show up on the report. There are a number of expenditures that we don't write checks for, and they won't show on there. So there's going to be some issues where people will see, well, you've spent this much money on this Ohio checkbook, but you're showing something else. The difference is because we receive mostly, when we receive net revenues from our property taxes and state foundation, we receive those net from Summit County and from the state, but there's expenditures embedded in there, and that's why we're getting a net revenue, so we have to post those expenditures as like a journal entry. Unfortunately, those don't show up on here. This just strictly shows what we physically cut a check for. So, keep that in mind as you're reviewing this, there's going to be some differences between what's on the checkbook versus what's being reported and what's audited, that's the main contributing factor. The personnel and benefits are all going to be on here, but they're not going to have information. There's a different tool that the state treasurer's has out there that you can look up salary information of any public employee, but that's in a different platform. So this is more geared towards like accounts, payroll checks, vendors that we've cut checks to, but it does report other financial information as well.
Now, is there anything to explain to the chart that's not public, that would be exacted, that like a payment to an attorney, is there anything that doesn't qualify?
No, the only thing that they look at when we submit a data file is if there's like student information on a check or something like that. But for the most part, our checks are to adults, so it doesn't show the description, and that's where you may see like a student, who the check is for, for a student, like a payment in lieu of or something, or a disability check or something, I don't know what it's like. But for the most part, there won't be a check on there that should have been redacted. And part of my goal too is to update this quarterly, so it won't be on demand, there'll be a timeline, so every time we finish a fiscal quarter, we would send in a data file and it would update that accordingly. So, I'm getting pretty close to going live with this, but I wanted to present it to the board and the public, just so that when we do go live, people kind of understand what's behind this and the purpose of it.
So there's no such thing as on-the-real-time integration, it's you, mom, and your file or something?
Exactly, yeah.
And our employees' payroll checks will not be visible.
Correct. Individual checks will not.
And it doesn't say what items, for example, if there's supplies, right? We cut a check to staples, so somebody might say, oh, why are you spending $300 of staples? But it's not going to be there, so that would be, right, it wouldn't be broken out in that detail, but it does allow you to see the vendors that we do pay, how much we pay, the amounts of different checks we cut.
Any questions?
Any other question?
Thank you for sharing, Matt.
So like I said, I will take that now to the state treasurer's and tell them we're pretty much ready to go live, so hopefully, nobody on demand, we can have it out there. There'll be a press release, there's quite a lot on there, a lot of all that information, so when that time happens, that's all.
Thank you.
Matt, we're only approving the consent items.
Yes, just the consent.
Long ones.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Lymer.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Bodich.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, item number two on my agenda is the approval of the May 2022 five-year forecast.
A motion.
A second.
All right, so, just make this go over here. All right, so, part of the reason why we do the five-year forecast is, one, it's mandated by state law in Ohio administrative code, it's required to do that in November of each fiscal year, and then do a spring update in May, so this will suffice for the spring update. It also helps to engage the community and the board members in long-range planning and our financial discussions that may come down the road as a result of forecast. And then finally, it helps provide Ohio Department of Education and the Ohio Auditor of State the ability to review public enemies' finances and intervene if matters are requiring that. So what this forecast will do is, it will, I won't go into as detail as I did in November, but I will summarize the major revenues and the major expenditure areas, and talk about some things that have happened throughout this year that have changed, either changed the forecast for the positive or for the negative. But again, I would caution everyone, this is a forecast, it is looking out four years from now, so a lot could change in four years, and please keep that in mind as you're reviewing this information. State budgets are biannual, so there'll be three different state budgets that'll be going through this forecast, which have drastic impacts on our financial debt, and also, you know, with negotiating agreements, those have impacts as well in this, so keep that on mind as we go through this. So how high district revenues are comprised of, we have basically three main components. Our property taxes are our largest, that's just under 71%. Our property tax is comprised of our real estate taxes, which, there are residential taxpayers, and there's commercial taxpayers, and we even have some agricultural taxpayers. And then we also have public utility and personal property, which falls in that category. The other component is state aid and reimbursements, this is our second largest revenue source, this is about 15% of the district's revenue. Within that category, there's unrestricted revenue, which is through the funding formula, and there's also the restricted state aid, which I talked about in my April finance update, and then also home state enrollment reimbursements. That's where the state reimburses, it reduces a homeowner's tax bill by a certain percentage and reimburses the district for that difference. And then, our third largest is the all other revenues category, this is just under 14%. What falls into this is our tax increment financing, service payments, our kindergarten tuitions, other fees, interest earnings, miscellaneous receipts, and those things of that nature. And then finally, on a very small scale, is our other financing source, which would be transfers in, advances in, which don't happen that frequently. So from an analytical perspective, just to see how our revenues have been and where they are going, the box in red there is our 2022 fiscal year. You can see that from, it goes from left to right, 2020 all the way over to 2026. And so from 2020 through 2022, we've seen an increase in revenues, mainly contributed to the operating levy that was passed back in 2019, as well as MGM settlement that had been brought into the general fund. But moving forward, we're projecting pretty much flat, if not a slight decrease in revenues over the coming years. So as I talked about on the property tax front, it is our largest revenue source. Of our revenue, of our property taxes is comprised of 72.28 mils, that's our inside millage and our voted millage, but of that is the effective millage, and that's the key number of what's applied here, your tax, your value of your house or your property. So our effective millage is only 35.69 mils. Of the property tax, different categories, real estate comprises 96% of our property tax, valuations, and then our public utility, personal property is just at 4%. Some of the assumptions that I use to come up with our numbers for this forecast is to, you have to evaluate the collection rates, as well as the delinquent collection rates. That is currently at 99.69. That is currently at 99.69% for current fiscal year, and then moving forward, I'm estimating a collection rate of 99.8%. So that doesn't mean that when our tax bills go out, 99.8% of the taxpayers pay their bill. What's included in that is our delinquents collection as well. So there's a little bit of a mix of different tax collections in that percentage. Some of the key factors to think about when we're evaluating property taxes for the future is what our current estimated current valuation growth will be for the next five years, and we're projecting that to be about $43.7 million. And then new construction growth is estimated to be about $16.6 million over the next five years. So on the, as far as a bar chart, you can see our property taxes, how they play out. The red box is the 2022 fiscal year, and so you've seen the increase, and that was expected due to the recent operating levy. But for the most part, we are expecting flat increases in revenue on property taxes. On to the state aid and reimbursements. This is the second-largest revenue source at just over 15%. It mainly is comprised of our new state funding model, which was implemented for the budget bill and then House Bill 110. Basically, that was a revolutionary change in how the state funds school districts. Historically, they would fund school districts where a student would reside. Now they're funding them where they're educated. So by doing that, there are some accounting treatments that needed to be taken care of. Historically, we would get, the district would get funds for students that attend other entities like St. Barnabas or some other community school or John Peterson scholarships, and then the district would pay those out to those respective entities. Because of the change, that no longer happens. So our revenues are going to go down on the state aid, but so are expenditures. So it's kind of a one-to-one wash on that front. But we are still unfortunately on the state guarantee, and so we don't anticipate much growth. Any growth that will be done in our forecast is done through the transportation funding, which the state is attempting to fund at 50%. So when you see growth in our state aid, that's the main component of where that growth is coming out. On the restricted state aid, again, I talked about the student wellness and success funds and our gift of funding are our largest components within that category. And then finally, what else makes up our state aid reimbursements is our home state rollback. Like I said, that is a program that the state uses to subsidize our taxpayers to help provide relief to tax bills. So currently, that is a 10% rollback is provided, as well as a 2.5% owner occupied rollback. The one caveat to this is state law, when they were going through their budget issues that they had at the state level, they removed this reimbursement for any new levy approved after August 2013. So unfortunately, that operating levy that was passed, there was no relief provided to the taxpayer because of that. So that's an area where it's a nice feature that the state provides, but also they are dependent on their budgeting, and that's something that they took action when they were going through hardship funding back in that time. This type of revenue closely follows our tax revenues, so that's where we project how the tax side also would follow the home state rollback rate. So again, a bar chart here to show how that revenue source has played out. As expected with House Bill 110, you would see a decline in our revenues because they also took out the expenditure side of that equation as well. So that's explaining that decrease. But then as the budget bill plays out in its entirety, we are projecting some increases in state aid. The other category that I left to touch base with on the revenues is the all other revenue line item. As mentioned in the introduction, this includes our tax increment findings and other tax settlements, our tuition fees, interest earnings, and other miscellaneous receipts. The biggest component of this is our tax increment financing and our tax settlements. We have several TIPS, is what they're called for short, with various entities, Macedonia and Northfield, and those provide additional tax payments for economic developments in those cities or townships or villages we like to do. They enter into these agreements with the school district and the developer, and we work out a compensation agreement. So the largest component of that tax increment for this current year and in future years is the addition of the MGM tax settlement that's been brought into the forecast. However, moving forward, this area is going to be showing a decrease because of the recent passage of House Bill 126, which severely limits supportive education's abilities to truly value and establish true value of property throughout the district. So that's going to impact us negatively. Again, like I said, tuition fees, interest earnings all fall into that. So you can see on this bar chart the significant change we had by bringing in the MGM settlement, coupled with all day kindergarten tuition fees being at a full-year collection rate. And then in 2023 and on, it dwindles down because that settlement payment starts decreasing throughout the timeframe of that settlement. Moving on to the expenditure side of the forecast, our largest expenditures are tied to our staff, salaries and wages and fringe benefits. That's about 71%, almost 72% of our expenditures are tied to staffing costs. So salaries and wages make up 52.17, and fringe benefits make up 19.67%. Purchase services area, that would be student transportation, substitute teaching, pre-K, buildings and ground and utilities. Those all are considered purchase services and fall into that category. That's at 17.47%. And then our all other non-personnel expenditures, which would be supplies and materials, capital outlay, and other objects, just are coming in at 10.69%. So again, here's the bar chart of our expenditures. The red is the 2022 school year, and it goes all the way from 2019 up to 2026. We are, as you can tell by this chart, there are increases in expenditures planned, and I'll get into that in more detail as we go along. So on the salaries and wages, as I said, that's our largest expenditure. Our staffing is comprised of two unions, our teaching union as well as our classified OC union. We have non-bargaining staff and administrators. Our collective bargaining agreements are currently in the second year of spring. Our next year will be the final year of that, and the district will be going into negotiations with those unions next spring. The forecast does assume, as stated back in November, the impact of ESR funding. We were able to utilize about $1.3 million of ESR funding to help move our guidance counselors, our psychologists, some of our aides, over into ESR funding for the current fiscal year. So what that means, though, is when that funding drives up, those staffing will come back into the general fund. So you'll see in the next pie chart, the increase, I'm sorry, bar chart, that you'll see the increase in where that staffing plays out. The forecast does assume a base increase of 1% in fiscal year 2024 and beyond. That does include, and on top of that, additional educational and staff increases. It is important to note that these numbers and assumptions, they're not planned or stated bargaining positions of the board. They're just used for long-term financial planning purposes. Fringe benefit side of things, that's 20, just under 20%. So of our fringe benefits, we have healthcare benefits, we also have salary-based benefits. Healthcare benefits are going to be considered our medical, drug, dental, and vision, and they're provided through a shared risk pool that the school district participates in. And then our salary-based benefits are pension, SDRS, SCRS, Medicare, and workers' compensation. Those salary-based benefits are directly tied to what happens with the salary. So if salaries go up, those components of the fringe benefits go up. Or alternatively, if they go down, then those go down as well. Our forecast for FY 2021, 2022 is reflecting a premium increase in the current year of 3.9%, and then for next year, a 6.45%, and then 5.5% annually following 2023. It is important to note that the forecast does not reflect premium holidays. Premium holidays is a function that is provided through our shared risk pool, where the district is not charged for premiums for a given month. Historically, that pool has provided us one, two, even three premium holidays, depending on how our claims do for the, and the payout of those claims do for the shared risk pool. So for the current fiscal year, we realize two premium holidays. For next year, we are only realizing one premium holiday, and then thereafter, I'm projecting none, because it's unknown whether or not they will be given out. It's important to note that one premium holiday equates to about $600,000 to $650,000 of savings. So anytime we do get those premium holidays, it is a savings, a direct savings to the bottom line of the district. So here is salaries, wages, and benefits all combined together, and you can see the increase. Again, the main increase is contributed to bringing the ESR staff back into the general fund, and then also not factoring in premium holidays for future years. So that's why those increases are showing the way they are on this bar chart. As we get through this forecast and the risk pool evaluates their claims and the payouts of those claims, that's when they determine whether or not they can give us premium holidays. So at this point, we can't predict that. On the purchase service front, this is our third largest. Again, like I mentioned, this is student transportation, which is the largest component of our purchase service category. We contract that out with Peterman, and we also use Suburban for our special ed transportation. Preschool services is done through this category, as well as our buildings and grounds, contracts that are done for maintenance and repair, like HVAC work, and other type of things that are needed for the maintenance and repair of the building. Nursing services, utilities, they all fall into this category. And I'll just note real quick, under the fair school funding plan that was passed, historically, community schools, open enrollment, and scholarship deductions were all charged here, but because of the change in how the bill's made, that funding is now removed and no longer part of the expenditure category. It is important to note that this area will experience some inflationary factors just based off of where we are facing with utilities and different things like that. So that is built into this forecast for the foreseeable future. And then also the permanent improvement fund impact, that's historically cost the district about $500,000 to $750,000 whenever the district would have to do a roof repair or a major parking lot repair. That historically wasn't a general fund. Now that's going to be paid out of the permanent improvement fund. So that's an area where we were able to relieve the general fund. So this is where we are with the bar chart. We are expecting to experience a decrease next year, and then even as a result of roofing and other major repairs not being part of this project. It's important to note that in the 2022 year, there was over $700,000 we paid out to roofing patch I did for the high school roof repairs, and that was done last summer. So that's part of that budget. That's why you're seeing a decrease. One of the reasons why you're seeing an increase is because that's a longer part of this budget we perform. And then finally, the other non-personnel expenditures. This is the area that talks about supplies and materials, capital outlay, and other objects, along with transfers out. This comprises 10.69% of the district expenditures, and the largest component of that, of the other non-personnel, is the supplies and materials line item. And that's where operations of the district, the classroom learning, along with additional materials to maintain the aging buildings and the fuel for the district fleet are paid out of this category. So after talking with Mr. Strickland, we do anticipate some significant inflationary factors with fuel and other areas in this specific category. And so we're assuming an 8% increase next year for inflationary factors, but then beyond that, we're bringing it back down to a 3% to 3.5% estimate. This area has increased over the, from previous years due to online learning and hybrid learning, teaching techniques that were proved beneficial during that time, and teaching staff and other support staff wanted to continue. I felt that was important, so those costs have continued into this current budget and future, I'm sorry, this forecast and future. Capital outlay, the district is a non-alien initiative. As Mr. Russ noted, we paid for the Chromebooks and technology out of that line home, so that's where that comes from. Hopefully, and additionally, like if the district were buying vehicles or large equipment pieces, that historically would have been a capital outlay, but moving forward, those type of purchases will be out of permanent improvement. The other objects line, the largest component of that is the Summit County auditor and treasurer fees. Those are, we don't negotiate those. Those are assessed by the county on the collections that they do for the district. Other areas that fall into, other categories that fall into this, other objects, and the state audit fees, bank fees, and membership fees. So a lot of these are out of our control as far as negotiating and working on better pricing. And then finally, operating transfers out. Historically, this has not been a component of the forecast materially. In the past, we've always just had some minor transfers out to meet our House Bill 264 payment and some athletic transfers. But because I have now brought in the MGM settlement, I also wanted to bring in offsetting transfers to give the board flexibility in determining how they want to handle those forms moving forward. So here's the bar chart for that. You can see the significant increase in the current year. And again, the purple category is the transfer out, so that's why it has alluded out, is because of transfer out, have historically never been in at that volume in the district's forecast or our finances. So then, future considerations for the district. So this is a chart showing our revenues in blue and our expenditures in orange. And then if you can make out the green line kind of weaving throughout that chart, that's our cash balance. And again, the red box is the current fiscal year. So we are planning for this current fiscal year to end the year having more revenues than expenditures, but then moving out, forecasting out forward, we are projecting to have expenditures exceed revenues. And the forecast is currently showing a deficit of fund balance in fiscal year 25, 26. So there are a number of things that we have to consider looking at this, and especially that far out. The insurance premium holidays, like I said, we budget, we forecast that if we're not receiving any of those. So if we get two premium holidays, that's about $1.2 million in savings, but again, that's not going to be built in because we can't guarantee that. Also, the MGM settlement application, how does the board want to apply that to the general fund and to the permanent improvement and other areas that are needed within the district? So there are areas where, even though that you see that negative in out in 2025 and 2026, there are areas currently that we can look at to help remediate that for the future. So with that, I will, if any questions, if you may.
Ma'am, just briefly, with your bonus one in the beginning slides, you talked about collection rates.
Yeah.
You know, what happens if we, or how does the district handle folks that do not pay, for instance, the bond towards construction, but we've moved forward with certain costs? Do we have to move money out of the general fund that's expected to have a deficit for the next years to cover that difference? Or how does the district work with that?
Yeah, so we're taken out of the picture as far as the collection of all those taxes. That's where the county comes in, and they assess their collection fee and distribution fee. And then that really falls on the county side of things to work with the property owner to pay their taxes. Historically, we are hovering around the 100% collection rate. Whenever a levy goes on to the ballot, the county always... Whenever a levy goes on to the ballot, the county always assesses the collection rate. So they'll usually put in something in there to factor in that you're not going to collect 100%. And that's why sometimes the millages are higher than that to factor in that you're never going to collect 100% of your collection. Thank you. Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Next item on my agenda is the approval of fund transfers. These are our routine transfers that we do near the end of the year. A $10,000 transfer from the general fund to the high school athletics or annual support. A $5,000 fund transfer from the general fund to the middle school athletics. And then a $6,589.98 transfer from the general fund to the bond retirement fund to pay for House Bill 264 debt. And again, these are routine, I recommend for approval. I need a motion.
Oh, I'll motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an approval of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 appropriation adjustment and I recommend for approval.
All motion. I'll second.
Again, this is an appropriation adjustment that we need to come to the board for suspending additional spending authority on the front of the permanent improvement fund when we got our bids in from the roofing project that came a little higher than anticipated as well as some additional expenditures and agrees that they come to our knowledge that need to be addressed, particularly the public announcement system in Northfield. So that's part of the thing that needs to be addressed through this as well.
Any questions?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number five is an approval for a cash balance reconciliation write-off and I recommend for approval.
All motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so this, just a little background on this one, this is a little unique. But I wanted to bring it to the board so that we could take action in the cleanup of reconciliation, bank reconciliation. When I took over, there was identified on our bank reconciliation of an amount of $3,502.20. As I researched that and looked into it, we had an unreconciled difference going back into February of 2020. And so me and my staff, we pinpointed that number of $3,502.20 and we made sure that that didn't change from June of 2021 through April, even today. And so that number has remained the same. So that's, we know that that's a number that needs to be written off and adjusted under the book so that we can have a clean bank reconciliation moving forward. And I'm recommending, or I'm asking for the board's approval of that.
Where, I mean, where did that want to go? Just out of curiosity. Did you pinpoint it?
It's probably, yeah, so what we, when we started to look at it, it's probably tied to the way that the accounting system handles our liabilities tied to payroll. So there's like, if we have to void a payroll check, there's a liability account that's created for taxes and different types of fringe benefits. We, what we're seeing is when those were happening over the years, over the months, those were getting corrected when they would, when you would vote, like if there's an error paying somebody, you would have to void that check, reissue it. But sometimes the liability accounts weren't clearing out and that would require a manual journal entry, but that was not being done, so.
I just want to make sure it wasn't.
Yes. No, it just did not disappear, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is a approval of a Summit County Educational Service Center auxiliary services agreement for the 2022, 2023 school year and I recommend for approval.
All motion.
I'll second.
This is due to us being part of the federal funds for state service under, under Ohio Department of Education. Currently, the school, public school districts bill is the fiscal agent for the federal funds for our public school districts. So it's just approving that agreement.
Any questions?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is to approve the local government services contract for the June 30, 2022 annual financial statements and I recommend for approval.
All motion. I'll second.
This is a routine item that we do annually to contract with LGS to convert our cash basis financial statements to generally accepted accounting principles. Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight is to approve the Norbonia Health City School District 403B and 457B plan adoption agreements with Equitable Life Insurance Company and I recommend for approval.
All motion. I'll second.
So when we switched our plan administrator last month, part of their services is to review our plans that we currently have and bring them up to internal service codes and any other federal law that needs to be taken care of. This is restating our plan to bring them current to IRS standards and codes. And it also addresses the ability for us to add new investment options. So we're going to take that opportunity and add a Roth option to our 403B and 457B plan. So by doing the approval of this adoption agreement, that will be a now, that will now be a new investment option for our staff.
Any questions?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then finally, item number nine is a resolution to approve the determination that the school district is a special needs district and authorizing the preparation and filing of materials with such applications and I recommend for approval.
All motion. I'll second.
All right, this is real quick on what we've talked about in a number of meetings in the past. This is the first step that the board would need to take to help us go down the path of potentially putting a levy on the November ballot. This is not holding the district to anything. This is more or less starting the process to give the district the ability to file paperwork with the Ohio Department of Education and Department of Taxation to make sure that we could be, we would be eligible for a special needs interpretation.
As we talked about upstairs, to me, this is a no-brainer, just to keep our options open. So not necessarily saying we want to go our maximum, but we at least want to know what that is to keep our options open to try and, you know, see where we go from here.
Thanks. Just to highlight a few things, Dr. Clark had sent you a URL. Toss it up on the board. Of course, as a trial attorney, I love exhibits and diagrams. And I promise to be brief because I know we've been for long and I appreciate everybody's attention. First, I want to thank the steering committee for all their work. I know we've, we've said that time and time again as a board and we thank them for all their hard work on the project. I'm absolutely in favor of building new buildings, but I really believe only when the time is right and that simply to me is not now. I'm a common sense person, I practice law in that form and I also try to problem solve typically in a common sense approach. But right now, common sense is essentially telling me that it's not the right time, especially with astronomical costs for construction. The report that's on the board over there is the 2022 report from the Association of General Contractors. And on page two, if you don't mind scrolling down a little bit. This here is a diagram going back to 2015, essentially explaining instruction or change in the prices for construction inputs and costs to build. As we see, not only three years ago, we were at negative 5%. It was three years ago and last year it was reported at 19.6% increase. And we had a discussion earlier during our work session that one of our bonds is going to be falling off in three years, roughly, I believe. And so I think seeing this, I have concerns with the cost overall and asking residents to pay for such astronomically high materials. So seeing this graph gives me hope that in a short amount of time, things turn around fast. And we of course see the ebb and flow there. But I think it's important for us to recognize that we're going to be building new facilities with almost a 20% inflation cost. And of course, that doesn't even factor in the difficulty in obtaining supplies, which could delay the building project even further out than three years. So I appreciate you putting that up on the board. Sure. And I think the other concern that I have too, of course, is what you highlighted in your financial forecast and the deficit that will be starting potentially next year, which may lend itself to us having to go back to residents in a few years asking for additional monies, depending on how that plays out through operational levies. So I have a lot of concerns of moving forward in this process right now and I think a lot of community members do as well.
Can I just ask a question? Just to clarify, to make sure, not even have the opportunity to study this ground, I think may have. So is that dropping off there, saying there's a decrease?
Right. The increase is attributable to COVID. As many of you know, a lot of people were spending money on personal construction projects, right? You go to Lowe's and you can find timber. That's reflective of that because that of course is roughly the start of COVID, that three year, well, two and a half years ago when it was almost negative 5%. Which it's a shame we're not having this conversation three years ago because we would have saved a lot of money. So I, again, yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Tidmore, that you see the drop off forecast wise that's weighted to continue decreasing, given that people have kind of maxed out on their construction projects.
That, I mean, that to me is the exact reason why now is the perfect time. Caga Falls passed their bond issue around that time, 2019. And now, because they didn't ask for enough money, the, they're not able to get their project started. But I'm, I'm seeing that where, you know, if the bond were to pass in November, there would not be ground broke for probably a year and a half. And by then, those materials may in fact be down to those levels. And I think the other thing that we need to just keep reminding the community of is the sooner we can have new buildings is the sooner we, or is the longer we can push off this operating levy because we anticipate to save $700,000 per building that we take offline. And I fear that if we wait too long for a bond issue, then it'll be time to have that operating levy. And I, I will say over and over again that you should never want to put a bond issue when you need an operating levy. Talman saw that. They built a new school and they didn't have people to staff it because they, they switched it. So I think now is the right time. Like even though it goes against, like you say, it goes against common sense because we're seeing what the, what inflation is. But again, passing something in November doesn't mean we'll be paying those prices when the time comes to purchase it.
It would just be nice to ask residents for maybe whatever amount we come up with, 100 million versus 150 million. So that's, that's of course why I have concerns with this. But I agree, hopefully in the next few years, it will continue to come down. If we do have a surplus, because let's say the market collapses in a year, we pass a bond for 150 million, what do we do with the excess money that we've collected from residents?
Because I think he, I think you said that if you, when you pass a bond for whatever that is, you don't have to sell those bonds. So that would in effect keep the residence tax rate down. When you pass a bond, you're, you're voting for up to X amount, not a specific amount, which is different than an operating levy. So in a, in a perfect, and I know the world's not perfect, in a perfect world, you know, you ask for 150, 160 million, it comes in at 140 and that's all you sell and the folks got a, a new system for 10 million less than they expected. Now, again, I'm not naive enough to think that there won't be, when it changes, change orders and all those kinds of things. But, you know.
Real, real quick, let me just correct something real quick if you don't mind.
Okay.
It's actually, so you will establish a bond like a dollar amount, whether it be 100,000 or 100 million or 150 million. That's what they're going to go out and issue bonds for. But what the difference between the millages, what the interest rates are on those bonds. So you're going to get $150 million to build a project, but the interest rates is what's going to determine the millage, the ultimate millage.
But if we don't, if there weren't 150 million spent, would that money then go back towards paying those bonds off?
It could be. If we structured the bonds in that manner.
This that we're voting on tonight is just a special needs calculation. So without the special needs assessment, we would only be able to go up to $90 million. The state of Ohio came in and assessed and said, if we rebuild, I remember, if we renovate all of our current buildings, at that point, four or five years ago, whatever it was, it was 115 million dollars, similar. I forget the exact number. So by today's numbers, that would be like 130, 135 million. So no matter how you look at it, we need the special needs assessment. We need to start this process to push this through the state because whatever direction we end up going, we're going to be going, I would assume, we're going to be needing more than the $90 million that we'd be capped out at under our current debt level. So I think you have to vote for this from my standpoint to just keep the options open to see where we go in the next two months to how much we're going to put on, on the ballot.
I think that's a fair assessment. I feel more comfortable with you adding those numbers for what it costs to renovate. So either way, we know that there's portions of our community who say renovate the buildings. There's a portion that says brand new buildings. Either way, we'll be equipped to do something which needs to be done because we realize there is a sense of urgency, at least from our assessment of the current condition of facilities. And even proof is in the pudding, the money that we're spending just to keep them standing. So I, I agree with you. If it's going to cost us about 115, 120 just to renovate them and or potentially 150 or so to build them, at least this puts us in a position to act and do something.
Yeah, I think voting no one is kind of slamming the door shut right now.
Just down 90 million and a dollar, you're not correct. Because the special needs designation is for anything that's above 90 million. So if we want 90 million and $1, then, then we need a special designation.
This would, yeah, this would basically just show what our maximum debt would be, what it could be.
It allows the hot department of it because where they work upon the state and they're saying that they sign off on giving us the seal of approval to go out and issue that kind of debt.
Do we pay for that service now? For them to toss what we can spend? It's just free.
Two.
We also pay the cert guide to the, to the ballot as well, the bond eventually.
Correct. If, if we put it onto the ballot, there will, there will be election costs for that.
Mr. Brown?
Okay, Mr. Kearney?
No.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes my report.
Our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be Tuesday, June 21st. It was originally scheduled for the 20th, which is the observance for Juneteenth. So we moved it forward one day to Tuesday, June 21st at 7:00 to see that. And I get a motion to look there.
All motion. Second.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour? Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Bottage?
Yes.
Motion carries.